Morning.
Call meeting in order, we do have a quorum. I would take a motion to approve the agenda. There's a motion, I'll second that motion, all favor I.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Alright, motion will carry, Rich Brum.
Good morning, how are you guys?
Good.
Um, not a lot to discuss this morning, other than the snow event we had, I think Plows ran both Friday and Saturday. So, um, it is what it is, hopefully things are getting cleared up today. I don't know if you guys had any phone calls or anything, got a few calls and mailboxes, but your typical, it was a wet snow, so it probably took a couple. But, uh, I can't think of much to discuss until we have our, uh, budget meeting next week, so, you guys got any questions?
No, I didn't hear any complaints or nothing, and it was kind of a pain in the butt snow, but.
Yeah.
Help our revels, our rock situation, I'm sure.
Well, and we tried to, we tried to keep everything groomed up before the event to eliminate any high points getting plowed off, but you just never know with the wet, heavy snow, it's, I'm sure.
Yep. Okay.
Alright, we'll stick around here, so.
Okay, thanks, Rich. Uh, drainage.
I see Brittany Law was on there, so she might be, and I forgot to write that on, but it's drainage.
Okay.
That's alright. So, yeah, Mark, I know I got called.
Yep.
And, uh, Tom Law said you had got called too about trees at his property.
Yep.
Um, I went out there and looked at it, if they cleaned that right away, they're gonna clear out half of his grove.
Yep.
If not all of it, um, he keeps it clean, it's not invacing into the, the slopes of the ditch, there's no tile underneath there where he's plugging tile. Um, I, I don't see an issue with just leaving it, I told him, and I told him as long as he keeps it cleaned up the way it is, which looks like he does take a very good job, you know.
Yep.
Keeping that clean, that it should be fine, we should, they should be able to clean it from the other side, because they got some work to do over there anyways.
Right.
Way look, so.
Have you consulted with John?
I did, I talked, I got ahold of John on Thursday, and, uh, I thought, last night before I left, I thought that John said they probably should be able to work around that area, and you shouldn't have to take them out, that's the last I'd gotten from John. And I thought John was gonna get in touch with Troy and, and the contractor guys doing the ditch cleaning, so.
Would you have issues with anybody else, though?
Well, there's nobody else that's gonna have a house sit right on the van, you just, you know.
Yeah, he is right.
Because this is the precedence.
Yes, and that's what John said, as long as we are consistent about what we do here, we'll be okay.
And they should have been at owner meetings.
Correct, everybody got the notice on this, that's why, you know.
But, and I, I'd have to talk to John, but Tom was saying too that the plan, or the, um, did the plan, did the survey on that?
Yep.
Was there anything mentioned about cleaning the trees at his?
Not specifically his place, I don't, from what I can see, um, his, you know, picture of his is in there.
I didn't.
There's his place, so there's the work areas and the, you know, the hundred foot workway, not easements, eighty foot easement according to the plan.
Right.
That we have, that we can go in and utilize for work, not a hundred foot, a hundred foot is just a work area, you got a little extra beyond that, but, and then, so.
Check through the corner of his house again, but then.
Yes.
See, and that's another reason where stuff got done years ago, where zoning would have been great, because then you knew you could not build that close to a drainage ditch, you know what I mean? But, nobody knew that, years ago, it just got done, looks like a lot of things just get done, and, so.
Well, and they, they do receive benefit, then.
Yeah, yeah, and he knows he's gonna end up paying for a portion of that cleaning, and, you know, we talked about that too, I said, yeah, you don't farm, you don't have any tiled hooks into it, but your property drains into it, so unfortunately, you know, you still gotta pay your portion, but.
We can try to get ahold of John, I suppose, and see what he, what the.
Right, 'cause, um, I know we had talked with Jacob, I think.
I guess Tom might wanna talk, because he was getting in.
Is Tom on there?
He's getting connected, it looks like.
Just came online, no audio yet.
But, and then we also talked about further down to the east, southeast of his house there, that, he said he was gonna clean out a bunch of that, because it was just some, yeah, kinda scrub brush, a little volunteer stuff coming in there, he's got, he's got a path through there, but he was gonna clean more of that out, so it would give.
Well, and would it be beneficial for the people that are there now to just do it since they're already there, would it be cheaper, because the, the district's paying for it?
Right.
So he'd just be paying a percentage instead of the whole thing?
Right, yeah, I guess that would be up to him if he wanted to let him in, um, Tom Law, are you?
Part of it.
You on the phone?
It's part of the, yeah.
Part of what was getting cleaned?
I would say yes, it is, it's between his house and his mother's house.
Maybe it's a different town.
Or try Brittany.
How about Brittany, Brittany Law, did you hear us, are you on the phone?
Just unmute.
Yep, I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we hear ya.
Okay. Um. I know Tom had spoke with, um, Jacob, who I believe is the engineer, right? And he spoke to him Friday afternoon, and what we were told is that they're still gonna clear forty feet, if I'm not mistaken, um, which, you know, I mean, it still takes our, our main shade trees and a large portion of our grove, so, I don't know if you guys have spoken to him since Tom has, um.
I haven't, Brittany, I did, I did speak to Jonathan, which is another one of the engineers with the company on Thursday there, after I talked with Tom that day, and like I say, I, I left for the weekend, but I understood at that time they weren't gonna take him, so, we need to get, we probably should give him a call here this morning and see what's going on.
Yes, yeah, because I do know that, um, he said that one of his guys would be out today to survey and mark which trees will go. So, I, I am be home as much as I can to try to, you know, actually see firsthand what, um, what their plan is, and I guess, you know, Tom and I've talked extensively about it, and our, again, our confusion is, is, um, you know, are they gonna come take all of our trees and then realize down the road that there really is no repair that needs to be done on our side? So I guess that's maybe where our confusion is, is, you know, do they really need, you know, our side, since there are no tiles to repair, is there future, I was trying to read that, the full engineer plan and, and comprehend and understand what, you know, the proposed work plan is, and it was fairly vague, but, maybe you guys can clarify more.
Again, I need to talk to Jonathan again, but we just talked, I said, I didn't, I didn't even know if they did any, do any dipping, you know, there, they're gonna do a little bit in there, so that any spoils, the way I understand, going the opposite side of the ditch of your property, you know, and they, we just need to call John or Jacob again here this morning, see if we can get ahold of them, did they give you a time when they're gonna be out there this morning?
They did not, no.
Because after the meeting, I know if they're gonna be there, one of us could probably stop out and talk with them too, I, I know I could, if you're not, yeah.
If, I know, it's Tom's phone number too, if you want, um, I can certainly give you a call when I find out they're coming, if you guys are gonna be around.
We'll, we'll give them a call here maybe before we, before we adjourn.
Yep.
And just, obviously, who's gonna be out there, what time they'll be there, and I've got a meeting at eleven, um, so if I can't go, then Mark will run out there and just meet with them too, so.
Yeah, that would, that would be great, I would sure appreciate that.
Sounds good.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you. But, yeah, like I say, I, I don't know, it's kind of a, kind of a case by case thing there, I guess, but.
Uh, it is, and it's like they say, we need to be consistent in whatever we decide to do, you can't do one, one, and then do something different in somebody else's place.
Right, well, when it comes to an acreage owner like that, it's.
An easement's our easement, I mean, that's.
Right.
And that's why you have landowner meetings.
Yeah, yeah, but like I say, it's, when you're not a farmer, you're not too worried about.
There's a lot of people that aren't.
A lot of landlords apparently weren't too concerned.
Right.
Didn't come in the meeting, I mean, and that's the sad part about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we spend a lot of money and time sending out notices and everything else.
Yep.
And they pay for it.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So, no, we'll have to just get ahold of, of Anthony or Jacob, either one, see if he's gonna be there.
Towards the end of meetings, there's, I'll tell Jonathan to see what's going on, uh, drainage claims, I did see some statements, right?
Thousand fifty or something like that.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve the drainage.
Yep, there's motion to approve drainage claims, I'll second that motion, all favor I.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion will carry. Uh, no regular claims this week.
Nope.
Any reports?
What's the court?
Report, report, oh, twenty thousand, that's a large number, courts back in session, so.
They're neglecting, Brian, which is.
Right, so.
That's a story.
Take a motion to approve the reports from the, uh, clerk of court and auditor.
So moved.
Alright, I'll second that motion, any discussion, all favor I. Aye, opposed, motion will carry.
Speed it up that much yet? Already going fast, I don't know.
Okay, payroll eligibility or salary changes?
Nope.
Liquor license?
Nope.
Um, ordinance, twenty twenty one dot one dot two five, ordinance designing certain areas of Worth County, Iowa's urban revitalization areas are second reading, can you read again?
We got till nine.
Might date that one, alright, uh, this ordinance, purpose and intent, chapter four oh four of the code of Iowa provides that a city or county may designate areas as urban revitalization areas eligible for property tax exemptions, and authorize the cities to issue revenue bonds for improvements made within those revitalization areas. On October twenty sixth, twenty twenty, the board of supervisors of Worth County adopted a resolution finding that the rehabilitation, redevelopment of certain areas of Worth County would be desirable, and that said area qualifies under section four oh four point one of the code of Iowa for designation as a revitalization area. The Worth County Board of Supervisors has deemed it appropriate to utilize the incentives of the Revitalization Act, contain the chapter four oh four of the code of Iowa to promote rehabilitation, redevelopment, as well as new development. Worth County Board of Supervisors has compiled, or complied with all the provisions of chapter four oh four, the code of Iowa, relating to the designation of certain areas of the counties as revitalization areas, and has waived the requirement of notification of tenants, as there's no reliable mailing list, and has heretofore adopted a revitalization plan covering specific areas of Worth County as described below. Uh, now, now therefore being ordained by the Board of Supervisors of Worth County, Iowa as follows, inscription, the following parcels as identified in the record books of the Worth County Courthouse Office, of the county auditor are hereby designated as the Worth County Logistics Park Urban Revitalization Area. Uh, one parcel belonging to Sukup Manufacturing Company, um, one parcel belonging to the Manley Logistics Park, and the other three parcels belonging to the Hapman family. Uh, benefits of this revitalization shall be only to the extent provided by the revitalization plan and heretofore adopted by the Worth County Board of Supervisors, that any person, firm, corporation, or other entity seeking to utilize the benefits of revitalization shall comply within the requirements set forth, and that the revitalization plan is hereby adopted. Uh, repealer, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith be at the same and hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. Severability, if any section, provision, or part of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, such injunction shall not affect the validity of the ordinance as a whole, or any section, provision, or part thereof not adjudged invalid or unconstitutional. Uh, effective date, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from, and after its publication, approval and passage as provided by law. That is our second reading, ordinance twenty twenty one dot oh one dot two five. Alright, we'll have our third reading next week. Did we have to motion? Assuming so?
Carry to consider the second reading.
So, we get a motion to carry, this is to the third reading now?
No, this is the second.
Okay.
So, good?
Yep.
Alright, road vacation, still waiting on that one, uh, when would it's back go? Morning.
I don't have anything new since Wednesday's report, so.
Alrighty, stick around, we're gonna get our plat done finally, so you can sell some lots for us.
Alright, sounds good, I actually have to take off in about ten minutes.
No problem, thanks.
Alright.
Jason Petersburg, good morning.
Morning, I'll give you a quick update, I guess, as far as where we're at with the improvements, all work has been completed, as you're aware, the punch list is complete, with the exception of some touch up seeding that they're gonna do in the spring, that's what our plan is, to proceed with the final pay estimate, um, on that, get the project closed out and withhold enough retainage to assure that the seeding work is addressed in the spring, and then we'll finish paying at that time. Utilities, um, electrics in, gases in, I have not heard out of W C T A if they have completed their install or not, I'll touch base with them just to see. Um, street lighting, we've got a package pulled together, we're gonna get quotes on that, so we can get the lights put in, when they can trench it in the spring, and then, um, rate study is the other item that we've been discussing, I've got a proposal pulled together, we'll get that over to you, look at the rates for the entire area, meet with the existing users, and get a new rate structure put in place for you. That's what I have for an update.
Sounds like a good plan to me, um, when we do that, we just can do some sort of a meeting with the, the, the other owners and that, because we have to come and go up on the proper scale, right?
Yep.
I think they need notifications to sort of change ahead of time.
Yeah. Um.
Or at least that's what we did last time.
Right, I'm assuming what we probably do is meet with them, let them be aware, because they, Kevin, the peasant out there, the manager, he's aware of it, we've talked about it before, um, right, we meet with them, let them know what's going on, then we could still give them a formal notice of, it'll take effect this day, basically, new water rates will take effect whatever day we decide, so, I guess that would probably be the most, the easiest way, sound good to you, Jason?
Good.
Yeah.
Hey, AJ, one question?
Yeah.
About stop signs out there on, coming off of Wheelerwood Court, going on to Wheelerwood?
I just saw that the other day, Dan, I'm glad you brought it up, forgot about it, there's no stop signs on our new road, and we probably should have them, just because people are driving through there.
I think you gotta run that, I've seen that run through board meetings before.
Did we, we approved, Rich, you still on there?
Yep, I'm here, I'm here.
We, we approved, obviously, the name of the road and approved those signs, did we approve stop signs at the same time, or were we waiting until?
You know, I should, I, I don't recall, I mean, I'll, I'll double check on some things, um, but if not, we can resolute something here. Jackie, there would have been a resolution, is there, do you have that, a copy of that somewhere?
Resolution for?
We would have had to resolute stop signs for that.
Yeah, I know.
In the rotor.
Oh.
I don't think it's in there. It's going off the memory here, but.
I'll do some digging.
Okay, yeah, do some checking, if not, let's.
You know, I know we discussed it, and I knew we were gonna need them, I guess, I don't know whether we, for the time being, if we have to, we can get some temporary ones put up, or, you know, the other thing is, is, um, how, uh, and I, and this probably is going way off track, we can talk about it later, but, snow plowing, snow right now, is it something you want done, or do we need to have it done, or just on an as needed basis?
I would do it, because we've, we've either gotta do it, or we don't do it.
True.
So, I would just.
Run through there.
Run through there, it doesn't have to be the prettiest thing in the world, and obviously winter's already over, half over, so, um, I would just recommend running through it.
But, suppose if we get, or want us to hand, or whatever, just because somebody peels through there and has an accident, then we're.
Well.
Well, and that's the other thing, what about speed limit through there?
And we'll need speed limit signs, yep, we'll have to figure that out, so we can make that all part of, if we haven't done a stop sign resolution, stuff, we can make.
We can make it on one, I don't know, the speed limit will be more than, well, we won't go more than twenty five, probably, I mean it, um, one thing, yeah, the one thing we'll need too, is if we're gonna plow through there, we may need something on the plow truck, they make these curb stops for the plows, because I don't wanna be starting to, if we got us, if we've got our front plow on there, and it doesn't have some sort of a, a rounded edge on it, we'll cut that curb up by accident if it's trying to sneak through there.
Well, we're gonna be needing it, so.
Yep, it's a small thing, we can probably either make something or, or whatever, but, yeah, I'll look into that, I'll see if we did a resolution, I should have had something in my notes if we did, if not, we'll see if we get something put together.
Uh, for now, should we have barricades up so people can't drive through there?
Um, that's up to you for now, I mean, we can, I can get guys, we've got temporary stop signs, we can put them up now.
I just do some temporarys for now.
Okay. And we're gonna have that, they'll be temporary, they'll be on a temporary base up until spring anyway, now we probably won't be able to put anything in, but, I'll get the guys to put two of them up here, today or tomorrow.
That'd be great, and then we'll try to resolute it next week, if we have it already.
Yep, alright.
Okay, anything else, Jason, are you just waiting for the, the rest, the good stuff?
I'm just sticking around for the rest of it.
Uh, we'll get a few more minutes, um, people's service, Chris on there, or?
I just got left on there.
We didn't have any reports.
Jackie, did you print off of the developer signature page, I brought the, the first three, and I didn't print that off, if, if you don't have a copy, maybe you could go up and, or that, you do have the fa- final plat, oh, good.
Which one?
Uh, it's the page with, it says developer, it'll be page number four of the PDF I sent you.
Because I see Jake signed his, right?
Yep.
I got it.
Thank you.
Before you sign yours, I'd like to have a motion and second authorizing you to sign on behalf of the board.
As the developer.
As the developer.
Okay. Sounds good to me. Well, Jackie's working on that, Joel, yeah, pictometry?
So, I sent you guys a copy, there's a, there's a new proposal, so we did, um, three project agreement with pictometry, uh, back in two thousand eighteen, so that would've been for flight two thousand nineteen, flight two thousand twenty-two, and then flight two thousand twenty-six, I think, is in there. Um, pictometry came back to me and said they would, right now, we're flying urban areas in three inch, and we're flying rural nine inch, and they came back to me, they're kinda getting away from the whole nine inch, uh, uh, technology, so they would like to fly the, the rural areas six inch. Uh, it, it is an added expense, uh, not much, but it isn't an added expense, but we would get better, uh, better photography in those rural areas, and, you know, I, I think it's a good idea, just because in two thousand thirteen, when we had the aerial photography taken, that showed all the tile lines, you know, a little bit better resolution, I mean, everybody used those tile lines, uh, they were really good, yeah, and I think a little bit more accuracy or resolution would be probably a better thing.
Sure, there's, there's stuff flying in next year, is it?
They'll fly next year, yeah, yeah, spring next year, and I think we're looking at, so, currently, if we flew next year, that would be, uh, seventy nine seven, and the projected right now, if we fly with the six inch, we'd be at eighty four five.
Five thousand dollars.
So, five, five thousand, so, it, it's a, you know, it's a major portion of the county, it's, it's, so I just kinda brought up to you guys, whether you thought yes, no, it's, it's kind of a few, and if you want more information, I certainly can get it to you.
What if we say no?
Then we just go ahead with the.
They're still, they're still gonna, they're still gonna fly and do nine inch then, even though they wanna get out of it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, but it's an extra flight for them too, so, it's, it's, because they gotta come in with.
So it'd be more expensive for them to do nine inch, so why don't you tell them, just do six inch for that, and it'll save them a flight.
I, you know, I, I've been, I, I've been in discussions with these guys for a while, I guess.
It kinda makes sense to me, is if they're gonna charge us more, but if it saves them a flight, if we just leave it alone, and everybody else is doing different, it'd make more sense for them to just throw us in the loop.
It does, but then, with the extra resolution, it's more processing time, and that's what they're charging us for, it's more processing.
Better resolution, would be nice if we catch a lot of stuff, so.
It does help the change finder product, product, um, the better resolution in those areas, then the better the change finder can distinguish between new construction, or, you know, stuff that's been done out there, so.
Why don't you give us credit for the one last flight?
That's what I agree you're working on.
That, yeah.
No, I, you see, he was looking for a complete, yeah, completely watch, he doesn't sound like they'll do that.
This proposal, we, we whittled this down quite a bit, and this does take into that, so.
Your building permits, and then you wouldn't need that.
Right.
We already went down that road once, we gotta deal with that, so.
I hope we can't, for eggworm, we can't require building permits, so.
And this is a multi-departmental use product, I mean, engineers use it, chair staffs uses it, assessors use it, um, you know, it, it's, I think they've done a good job for us over the years, we don't have to fly again if we don't want to, it's not like we're locked into these flights.
Right.
But we did, excuse me, we did lock in the prices on that.
Okay.
Excuse me. This is just a budget I can do then, obviously? It is, yeah. You know, you don't have to approve.
Can we build and approve it with the budget or without, and then going forward?
Correct, all this is just an informational meeting for you guys.
Well, a lot of people do use it, like you say, I know, I mean, it's, we set out in the field doing titling, and it popped up the maps, and.
It helps.
Yeah, like I said, it is a heavy use product for the county.
Okay, well, you gotta do it, I guess, alright.
AJ, I found a, a draft, I, I thought a draft resolution for stop signs there, but I don't know if I've ever gotten one signed, so I don't know if we ever actually discussed it, I had one created a while ago, but it had no dates on it.
Okay.
Well, I'm looking through my emails that I would have sent to Jackie if we needed to get it on there, and I just haven't found one, so maybe we had one set and ready to go and never did it.
I think we were waiting until we actually got it closer to done.
That might be it, but I do have the resolution, and I'll send it to her, but if we wanna.
Yeah, can you tune that up and get the speed limit signs put in there as well?
I can probably just do two separate ones, because they're gonna reference two sections of the code, probably, so, but, yeah.
Okay, whatever, alright, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, it is nine o'clock, yep, and Jeff, our county attorney's here to help us with our plat dedication for our development.
You got a blue pen?
This one is blue, yes.
Alright.
So, I've got first is a signature page of the developer, it's a dedication of plat for top of Iowa, second edition, Worth County, uh, basically, this is stating that Iowa, or, uh, Worth County is the developers of this, um, on this day, I think, day of January twenty twenty-one, before we'd undersigned a notary public in the state of Iowa, personally appeared to be known as the, to be identical person named, and who executed the foregoing instrument, acknowledged what they executed, the same as their voluntary act indeed. Basically, I need a motion to approve, um, Aaron Stone as the chairperson of the board to sign as the developer for this.
Is this a resolution, it's on your agenda, or?
No, it's doing, so is this the proper steps, you have the resolution for, and then this? This, yeah, this is the, in order, in order to have the dedication be complete, we need the signature, and.
So I will make the motion to have AG sign on it.
Okay, there's a motion, and I will second that motion, all in favor I?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, alright, motion will carry. I oppose. Alright, motion will carry. I am approved to sign the. Resolution. Twenty twenty-one dot oh one dot one eight, Worth County, Iowa approval of final plat for top of Iowa's second edition in Worth County, Iowa.
At this point, the board has been presented with the dedication of plat by Worth County as the developer. And attached to it is the certificate of the county treasurer stating that there are no taxes due on the property. Looks like Jackie has the final plat. And I have the attorney's title of opinion showing that the developer does own all of the land. In it, I think at this point, uh, I, I don't know if you've had any conversation with. Uh, our engineer about reviewing the plant. Uh, or if he's been kind of involved throughout the process.
Yeah, Jason has and, and you, Jason, you can speak up to this too. I know nothing changed from the preliminary plat to this plat, correct?
Correct. And I talked to Rich about that portion of your ordinance as well this morning if he wants to weigh in.
Yeah, I, you know, honestly. With you guys having a professional engineer on.
Jack, no honesty.
Sorry, um, I'll lie a little bit then. I'm sure. You guys hired a professional engineer to do the work and to develop it, so really, you know. As far as me being involved, yes, I've, I've looked at things as they come through, but. You know, a lot of uh developers and a lot of consultants are gonna use SUDAS as a, as a main base for a lot of design. I don't know, Jason, if that's what you guys use a lot of, but. The standards are gonna be pretty parallel to any other standard the DOT has or, or SUDAS is gonna come in. With and just looking at the general basics of what's there, I don't see an issue with anything that's there that's gonna cause a problem, so. Whether I need to sign off on it or not, I guess the developer, you guys are the developer. You hired an engineer. They can sign off on it and I don't need to be involved.
There, there isn't a place in the um, in the Worth County code. Where you actually have to sign off. It just talks about the uh plat review, department reviewing it and making. That it meets the requirements. So I think if you can report that the requirements have been met. And that you're comfortable with them approving and signing the resolution, I think we're good.
Yeah, that's fine. I think there was um. Read the plat schedule, yeah. So whatever you guys want me to do, I mean.
Are you okay with the uh, the design and the plat, Rich?
I am. Yep.
All I need is.
Right.
You're, you signed the resolution as a testing to it being a. Yeah, I didn't think there was a signature on the engineer end of it. And I, you still have Jake's signature page. Just to keep it all together.
So worth what we can just approve.
Resolution.
Take a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dot oh one dot one eight, which is the Worth County. Uh, top of Iowa, second edition final plat.
Do we need to read it?
Do we need to read it all, Jeff?
I don't know that we need to read it. Do you normally read your resolution?
Resolution's gonna be in the papers.
Perfect. And I'll make that motion to accept the resolution.
Okay, there's a motion. I will second that motion. Any other discussion? Uh, hearing none, I'll take a roll call votes. Maybe?
Alright.
Stone, I. That motion will pass. That resolution will pass. Alright. Is that it? Yep.
Did Jackie was gonna have made a change to the resolution. I assume you printed off.
Yeah, that, that's the one that I gave to you.
Oh, okay. Let me look again.
And just that little title.
Well, you, you had emailed it to me.
Yeah, and I printed it too.
I don't have a printed version of it. You gave me Jake's.
I gave that one. I gave you the plat.
I've got the developer signature. Oh, was it one I put in my? Yeah, there we go. Too efficient. I think there was a bill for twelve hundred and fifty dollars for the uh abstracting for. Abstract that went into the development. I'll be submitting that. I'm assuming it's gonna be coming out of whatever account. And then there will. The last step in the process. Uh, is we've previously approved the CCRs. In that uh agreement with Worth. Our Diamond Joe Worth. Uh, I think you're already authorized to sign on behalf of the board. I don't think we need to do anything more. I'm just putting that together for final signatures and probably have it. If you're gonna be here at some point this week, let me know and we'll have it here so that you can sign it. Uh, otherwise, we can do it next Monday. And again, it doesn't need to be on the agenda. It just needs to get recorded. Uh, we had the recorder's office and I think. At least originally, there was a place for someone from Diamond Joe to sign it, so. Um, I'll also get um Scott Smith's signature. Uh, at some point this week, so we're good to go on that. And then I, we're. We're done. Same way with transferring back lot number twelve. Uh, I'll get the paperwork ready to do that for signature probably about the same time. Uh, and we can return that. To uh Diamond Joe Worth. Because again, it's part of the preliminary agreement we had, there is no. There is no ability for the citizens to remonstrate against. The, the deed. I don't think we need to do any further notice or any application on it. It's uh. But if I change my mind, well, I'll warn Jackie.
That's fine. Um, so then the next step after that.
Start selling.
We have to, we have to do a public hearing on pricing the lots, correct?
Well. You know, it would. Once you decide how much you wanna sell them for, yes, we need to do a public hearing on the sale of all the lots. And naming the price that you're looking at doing them on. At one point, you talked about going a different direction and selling the whole thing.
I don't, my opinion is not to do that, but.
Okay.
It was at first, but after talking with some other people, uh, like it's better, it's gonna be more paperwork for us, more public hearings, but.
Yeah.
Um, if we establish prices reasonable, basically the price is the price and. I think people know that, but. But just because the fact that if somebody, a developer came in and buy it and then just jack the prices up high enough where you're not gonna sell them. Now you're sitting on stuff out there that's not sold. But as you can see, there's some other lots out there that have got a pretty high price. They got them that are still sitting empty. So my opinion is to try to. Yeah, well, I wanna see buildings go up. I don't wanna see somebody have to mow grass, just to. You know what I mean? So that's my opinion, but so anyways, yeah, we'd have to go that route, just to offer it for sale. Uh, through a public hearing then.
Okay. No, that's fine.
Okay. And I think we'll obviously wait on that till we uh get three in here so we can. Do that, so maybe within the next couple of weeks, we'll try to get that done. After budget stuff, maybe first, first part of February, so. Okay. Is that it for the, for you then, Jeff?
Hey, unless there's a question. I mean, it uh, I don't generally have a Monday where I'm not doing courts, so. You can thank Martin Luther King.
Thanks for putting your time in that, Jeff. It's, it is a good thing to have done, so.
Always a pleasure.
Yeah, alright. Uh, go back to department head discussion then. Does anybody have any issues on the COVID nineteen policies or anything?
I think the only thing was that Jake uh did send me an, oh, Stephanie sent an email to me last week saying they are no longer requiring appointments. So I think that's countywide now, so I'll probably take that off the website.
You guys, like I said, you guys are in the offices every day. We don't. So. Obviously, we just stick with our safety protocol is, you know, we still got our shields up, still wearing masks, let's stick with that, but. The consensus is, with the other elected officials, I'm staying out of it.
So far so good?
Okay. Uh, board appointments. What happened, Jackie?
Letters out and people, yeah, bailed on you. Yeah, so he decided it was somebody else's turn and Sonny's been on there for a long time too and kinda decided the same thing. He said he'd stay in if you didn't find anybody, but he would rather not do it anymore.
So those both have knowledge of ag ground, that's right.
Um, that was, what was that one? It was just, yeah, knowledge of.
No, Ireland's not having a domain and that's just, yeah, he said to basically have a. Yeah, knowledge of land values.
Yeah, and that was the list he was on. It was the last list.
Yeah, he wasn't a realtor.
No, so. I'll just have to find a.
Now.
Willing person to be on there until. Eternity is over.
Um, okay, well, I guess we can start looking around for that one. The zoning one, does that have to come out of that township then?
Supposed to. That's why Jeff was kinda on the border.
Right.
And he's in Danville. I think he's in, he's got, he's close, not too far from me, so I'm pretty sure he's in Danville.
Okay. Yeah, he's below four hundred, right? Yeah.
I think he's on three seventy.
Yep, so we need to try to find somebody from Danville then. A township, I would assume to.
So look at your plat books.
Yeah. And then um. While we're speaking on uh zoning, um, I did talk with Matt. I need to call Jeff this morning. Um, he's Jeff's, or Matt's available Tuesday and Thursday afternoons this week or something. He said he can make whatever work. Um, so I'll try to schedule with those guys to meet with them. And uh make our transition there so that uh Matt will be taking all the, all the info that he needs. Um, he said he has been getting about emails and phone calls already on stuff, so.
Yeah, cause he's hooked into the email.
Yeah, yeah, so he was, he already, already been seeing stuff and.
Jeff will have to know when he wants to be taken off that group email.
Okay, as soon as basically I think we meet, it's transition made. I mean, we've already approved Matt as being the zoning guy, so we're just gonna make the transition. Then I'll talk with Jeff a little bit on the township stuff for the board. Because let's just see what's, what the, the ordinance reads on it, so. And I can, we can do that when we meet, so. I'll be off the, Jackie, I'll have to get his contact info for him. He's like calling. Yeah, I'll check after the meeting, that's fine, so. Uh, Supervisor Weekly, Mark.
I had uh trans- transportation hazmat boards. Um, and I had North Iowa Juvenile Attention and Wellness this week too, which Wellness, we just went over the programs a little bit. North Iowa Juvenile Attention is just their quarterly meetings and um, actually everything's going pretty well there. With North Iowa, Hazmat Transportation was just going over budgets and things and. Hazmat is gonna go, be going on the ISICS radio system, I think here. Hopefully they're gonna start purchasing them in the next year or so, so you can get up on that. Gonna be placed in another budget.
Alright, I had uh nine o'clock Monday night. Myrtle's doing a fantastic job, uh. Taking over for Joe. Myrtle Nelson, so um, she's doing a good job there, good turnout and the executive board. Uh, there's a few changes in there, but they had to be just because people have been there long enough, terms are up. Little rotation happened there, but everything's running pretty smooth there. That's doing really well. They go after every ounce of funding they can get, grants. I mean, it's, it's good to have around. I mean. All the stuff we ask them to help with, it's, they got the knowledge, so. Um, and then I had, uh, we had a special for Care Connections Northern Iowa. Um. The district to the west of us, the regions to the west of us, uh, rolling hills and leave. We're gonna have these access centers and they're supposed to be in place by Ja- July first. Um, and they have found a facility in. Sheldon. That um, a building for sale that they were looking at possibly purchasing, but they wanted to go in with us. Um, to offset costs because they cannot afford to operate this on their own. So they're hoping to go with us so we could utilize this facility, somewhat of a central location. Um, but utilize a facility for everybody there because technically it has to be within a hundred and twenty miles. Um, maximum distance of anywhere in the region. We don't make that. Um, we're, I think I was sitting here, was one fifty from here and one forty from Manly. I just typed it in on maps. That doesn't count wrapped in and that, you know, the other fifteen miles, at least that we go this way, ten miles, whatever it is. Um, so. Talking with some of the others, it's gonna put us at this stretched out point of the hundred and twenty miles. And obviously, we're past that. You know, the reason, part of one of the reasons why we got out of CSS is because everything was getting too far that way for Winnebago and Cassup. You know, they were gonna be stretched at that hundred and fifty mile range. And, you know, it's just, it's not good to tell your clients and your, the patients that need this help that they now have to drive a hundred and fifty miles to get access. So we're gonna meet again next week and discuss whether or not we go that direction. And I personally am not in favor of it because it. It, yeah, we, we will have a service available, but we're just driving, we're expecting these people to drive way too far, so. I'm not gonna be in favor of it, um.
So I know we were discussing that too. North Iowa Juvenile Attention has brought up with access centers and stuff. And the youth being able to utilize it too, but that's same difference of where they're at, they're way too far away.
Yeah, so. So we're hoping we can. I mean, we know we gotta pay for it. We know it's gonna come, but we just, we, we need to find a little better location for it to utilize our region because we are kinda spread out. Um, so I, I think we're gonna just continue looking at that and we'll try to get one, get it going by. July first, but if it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen, you know, I guess.
Can you even work with the, the, the smaller regional hospitals and use that?
Well, see, that's what we have right now is a, is a per-use contract in Sioux City, which is way along. But what we would do is if we got in on that, we would probably still have to get a by-use contract with somebody local here, whether if there's the. In Mercy and Mason or even Fort Dodge or something.
And there's smaller regional.
Yeah, we'd still have to enter into a contract, so. Our county wouldn't really be utilizing what they're paying for. They, I mean, we'd still have to pay it. They still have the services, you know, but. It wouldn't necessarily cost us much more because we're only paying as we use it if they let us into that kind of a contract. So it's kind of a. We need to find one that's just better for our region. And if we can grab some other regions to help, you know. Everybody's gonna have to work out because there's only, there's only supposed to be six of them in the state of Iowa.
We can't cross state lines either.
Right. So you start putting a hundred and fifty mile, or a hundred and twenty mile circles in the state, you got plenty of coverage, but you just kind of get them in the right spots.
Right.
And we just, the only thing we don't like, it's gonna, it would be almost five hundred thousand dollars a year, and we're just kind of getting thrown at us, like, we need to have a decision made by February first, then, we're not, nobody, that I've talked to on the board, nobody is in favor of making that quick of a decision on that kind of money, so. Yeah, so that'll go out longer anyways, but, so anyways, we'll discuss that more next week, yeah, next weekend, so. Um, and then, yeah, did meet with, with Tom out there as well. Speaking of which, should we try to call Jacob while we're still here? And discuss that with him?
Should it be Jacob or John?
Uh, yeah, call, well.
Somebody got his phone number?
John's the main.
John's the main one. He's the one I guess I talked to on Thursday, so. He was, assumed looking at the maps when we were chatting, so.
Okay, you ready?
Yeah.
Five one five four six zero nine six nine nine.
This is John Rosengren with Wiltman Mains, I cannot take your call right now, if you please.
The other number is is worth one.
I'll try it.
Sure, seven one two.
They can connect us with Jake.
Five eight zero fifty seventy five.
The name's Wiltman Mains, this is Solis.
Solis?
Yes.
Say this is the Worth County Board of Supervisors, we're looking for John or Jacob this morning?
One moment.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Clayton, right?
Yes.
Yes. Correct.
Okay.
This is Jacob.
Hey Jacob, Mark Smaby and A.J. Stone, Worth County Board of Supervisors.
Alright, Mark, how are you doing?
Not too bad. Are you gonna be up with DDA team today?
I am not, but Joe is gonna be up there today.
Joe is gonna be up there?
Yep, do you want to, you want his number?
Well, do you know what time he'll be there, by any chance?
I don't know, I will, I'll call him as soon as I hang up with you.
Okay, well, what we're calling about is, I talked with Jonathan last Thursday about the trees on Tom Law's property. What's, what's going on there?
Um, so, we are going to just clear to the right-of-way limits, which is about fifteen, twenty feet on the top of the bank.
Okay.
From the top of the bank, and I talked to him Friday.
Okay.
Explained to him that way, but I said it's just a, you know, standard, standard practice, that way we'd have, have, legit, come in and do, come in if we need to replace a pipe, or if any slumping, it's really an access way.
Okay. There's no pipes in that area, but, so is that gonna be taken out as mature trees there?
There will probably be some trees that'll be taken out. Joe is gonna stake it today.
Okay.
See what it looks like, take some pictures of it, and see how many trees are actually gonna be affected by it.
Okay.
Jacob, when I was talking with Tom Saturday, Saturday, um, he was fine with taking some of the stuff to like the southeast, I would call it, there's kind of some scrub brushy stuff. Little bit in there, and there's some volunteer trees coming up, but, um, the big concern was more of the mature trees to the, like, the northwest corner of his property. Um, do those, do they really have to come out?
Might be that fifteen, twenty, I didn't measure it when I was there that day, I should have. So you're fifteen to twenty feet from the top of the bank, or the center of the ditch?
Top of the bank, that's what we're kind of estimating. He's gonna stake it, it's forty feet from the center line.
Correct.
Yep, and, um, do they need to be come, come out? I think it's will they affect much if they're there? Probably not a lot, it'd be more of a you know, do you want to make an exception for him? Um, and then knowing, moving forward, you'll probably have more ditches retreat on them.
Well, this is kind of unique, I mean, the situation that acreage was built right, almost on top of, we're pretty close to the actual easement, but not, I mean, it's in the work area, the corner of the houses, but
Yes.
you know, I don't think, I don't know of any other place in the county, this is a pretty unique situation, I think. I, I, you know, I would definitely not be in favor if this was out in the middle of somebody's farm field, it, it wouldn't happen.
Right.
But again, I understand what's going on, we gotta be conscious of what, how this will affect drainage too, you know, if there was an issue.
Yeah, it looks like, I'm just on Google Earth measuring, I was a ruler, it looks like, if you go twenty feet from the dollar length, it looks like maybe there'll be one row that's affected by it. But Joe, I'll have, when Joe's there, I'll have him stake it, and also take some pictures of it, and then he can send them to you guys to see what the boat would look like.
Okay.
See how much.
Do you know what time he's gonna be out?
Yeah, can you find out what time he's gonna be out there, and you want to just send me, have him send me a text or whatever, we do have a session meeting at eleven, but I mean, I could be out there after dinner, if he was there, I'd like to talk to him.
Yep, yep, I'll give him your number, I'm gonna call him as soon as I hang up with you guys, and then, yep, I can give you a call back.
You got my number?
Uh, is it the six four one, three two four, thirty six, thirty six thirty?
Nope, you got a pencil?
Yep.
Six four one, five nine zero, six six zero nine. And like I said, I can meet him out there after dinner, I'm pretty sure we'll be done with the session by then, so.
Yep, and Joe will still be there.
Okay. Perfect, I'll track him down, if he sends me a message, let me know where he's at, kind of.
Yep, will do.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Jacob.
Thanks, bye, guys.
Bye. Like I said, it is unique. And I told Tom the same thing, I said, if it was that stuff across the road, I said, we would, we had no choice, we'd have to tear it out, you know, or across the ditch, because it is, it is promoting problems there, and that's what we're.
Trying to avoid.
Yep.
I'd say that, you know, forty, fifty years ago, they let that go, and.
That's why we're there now.
That's why we're there now.
With cottonwood trees that are six and eight foot across, and they're monsters.
Some nice logs out there.
Yeah, so, alright, well, let's see what they stake out, take a look at it, and then either you or I can revisit with Tom or Brittany, and try to get, try to come to a consensus on everything, so. Alright, uh, anything else needs to go on the agenda?
Not for next week.
Next week's fall, I mean, I, I know there's some stuff that was gonna get thrown in there too, but, yeah, we'll, uh, we'll be here all day next week, so.
Nothing better to do.
Yep, okay, otherwise, if not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second that motion, all favor, I?
Alright.
I oppose, meeting is adjourned, thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.